We will now call to order the St. Louis City Board of Aldermen for Monday, August 30th. Serita, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Present. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Present.
Alderman Coder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Twenty-six present.
Warren being present, first thanks to everyone for helping me make it through those audio issues and thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman for getting the meeting started. Before we begin today's meeting, I'm going to ask everyone if you'll join me in the moment of silence for, for the thirteen fallen service members in Afghanistan. All of them were under the age of twenty except for one, not, excuse me, under the age of thirty except for one. One of them was a friend of my son, Max, who you all know joined the military. They went from kindergarten through eighth grade together. They were all just texting each other, you know, a week ago. And this is just so tragic for, you know, so many families across this nation. So if you'll join me in the moment of silent prayer for those thirteen fallen service members this morning. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We're going to suspend with our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderwoman from nineteenth, you recognize on motion for our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Sir, my whole Zoom just.
Okay. Okay.
I'm back now. I'm back. I don't know what happened. It just zipped out. So, uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move to adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Second.
By the nineteenth, uh, I think I seconded by the. Second about Alderwoman from the fourteenth, I think. Getting a strange echo through my phone, so pardon me if I can't pick up exactly who's on the second this morning, but it appeared to me it was Alderwoman of the fourteenth. Alderwoman from the thirteenth, you recognize the resolution?
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members of the board. Uh, this morning we paused to give special attention to Resolution Seventy-eight, which welcomes Afghan refugees to St. Louis. The resolution reads, whereas St. Louis has a long history of welcoming refugees and is currently home to refugees from more than two dozen countries, and whereas Afghan refugees are in need of support from the diverse resources already available in St. Louis, and whereas resettled refugees contribute to the economic growth and cultural richness of the communities where they settle, and whereas we believe that opening our doors to those who are fleeing violence does not endanger our safety, but rather shows compassion and hope, and whereas the city of St. Louis strives to be a place where individuals and families from all backgrounds feel safe, are treated with respect and dignity, and are recognized for their contributions to building a strong and vibrant community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to welcome Afghan refugees to St. Louis. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at a time and place to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this thirtieth day of August, 2021, by the Honorable Ann Schweitzer, Alderwoman Thirteenth Ward, the Honorable Christine Ingracia, Alderwoman Sixth Ward, the Honorable Bill Stevens, Alderman Twelfth Ward, the Honorable Annie Rice, Alderwoman Eighth Ward, the Honorable Dan Gunther, Alderman Ninth Ward, the Honorable Megan Green, Alderman Fifteenth Ward, the Honorable Kara Spencer, Alderwoman Twentieth Ward, the Honorable Shamim Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Twenty-Sixth Ward, the Honorable Thomas Oldenburg, Alderman Sixteenth Ward, the Honorable Dwyndron Lynn Evans, Alderwoman Fourth Ward, the Honorable James Page, Alderman Fifth Ward, the Honorable Shane Cone, Alderman Twenty-Fifth Ward, the Honorable Heather Navarro, Alderwoman Twenty-Eighth Ward, the Honorable Brett Narion, Alderman Twenty-Fourth Ward, the Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderman First Ward, the Honorable Tina Peel, Alderwoman Seventeenth Ward, the Honorable Sarah Martin, Alderwoman Eleventh Ward, the Honorable Ja- John Coder, Alderman Seventh Ward, the Honorable Carol Howard, Alderwoman Fourteenth Ward, and the Honorable Joe VaCaro, Alderman Twenty-Third Ward.
I would like to move we make it bank. I don't think anybody's missing anyway.
Dang it.
Second, yeah. All the women, anything further?
Yes, thank you very much, my colleagues who signed this resolution. And if it's okay with the president and the right time to do so, I'd like to ask Mr. Ari Obenson, President and CEO of the International Institute, to speak briefly about the history and contributions of refugees in the St. Louis community, the international efforts now around the resettlement of Afghan refugees and special immigrant visa holders, and how we may be able to offer help if it's the right time for him to speak.
Uh, Mr. Obenson? Yeah, please proceed.
Yes, it is. Good morning, President Reed and Alders. Um, it's a great honor for me to be here today. Um, to one, express our profound gratitude for the support that we're getting from the city council. And secondly, to highlight the work that the International Institute has done since its founding in nineteen nineteen. Since nineteen nineteen, the International Institute has welcomed waves of immigrants from across the world and provided a pathway for those immigrants to achieve their greatest potentials and contribute to the development of the city, St. Louis. Many may know, or many here may remember, the waves of arrivals to include the Vietnamese that came after, at the end of the Vietnam War, which unfortunately seems to, um, the recent events really remind us of what happened at the end of that Vietnam War. But since then, we've also welcomed to this community the huge Bosnian arrivals in nineteen ninety as well as, more recently, the Syrians. In recent years, we've seen an increase in arrivals from Iraq, from Afghanistan, and the Democratic Republic of Congo. At the International Institute of St. Louis, we provide more than just a welcome. We ensure that these new arrivals to our community are given a welcome with the dignity that they deserve. And secondly, are given the opportunity to become successful in this, in this community. And there are examples of, of the contributions that immigrants who came here as refugees have made to the development of our community. We are faced with arrivals of an unprecedented magnitude. Uh, because at the beginning of this year, we knew that there was going to be a withdrawal from Afghanistan. We knew that there will be a constant flow of arrivals to St. Louis, but none of us predicted that it would be over a compressed period of time. At the International Institute, we are planning as if we are preparing for a disaster because we do not know the dimension of the arrivals. When we said one thousand arrivals, we thought that it would be spread over a period of one year. But mindful of the events of the weekend of the fifteenth of August, we know that that's going to happen maybe in less than a six-month period. What that means is we alone cannot welcome these new arrivals. We need the support of the community to be able to ensure that we have the capabilities, the housing resources, the furnishing resources, working with the school district to ensure that the children who are arriving have a place in school, providing English language courses for those who may need it, even though we know that this particular group would have a higher level of English, working with the city to provide the healthcare support and assistance that will be needed. So it's a comprehensive approach that we're using that will ensure that we don't just welcome them in the next ninety days, but ensure that we are there to work with them for the next year or two or three years so that they too can contribute to the development of this community. It is in that backdrop that we're particularly grateful for this support and look forward to working with you to ensure that these new arrivals are given an opportunity to succeed here in St. Louis.
Thank you so much. Let's give them a big round of applause and thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third, you're not recognized. May, permit me, yes, I would like to move that we make this in bank.
Second.
By the one from the twenty-third, um, heard the second. I know the Alderman from the tenth. Bill, the Alderman from the twelfth, Alderman from the twelfth. Alderman from, and second about Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Anything further on Resolution Seventy-eight? Anything further on Resolution Seventy-eight? It's been moved by Alderman from nineteenth, second by Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar, has amended, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. To that, we'll return our regular order of business. Any introduction of honored guests, introduction of honored. Um, yes. As always, I like him, my friend Greg Meyer is my honored guest. Welcome Greg. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and I know that he was also a special guest of Alderman Schweitzer, but I, the International Institute resides in the eighth ward right now. And I just want to have Mr. Obenson and all of the staff that is working incredibly hard at the International Institute and every single St. Louisan that has worked to donate supplies already, that is gathering supply drives and dropping those off and working really hard to make sure that we are ready for arrivals very quickly. Have everyone as my special guest this morning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, any further introductions, any further introductions, further introductions? Right. Alderman, approval of the minutes, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on approval of minutes.
Thank you, Serita, unmuted. Aye, thank you, sir. I move for approval of minutes from Tuesday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
And I'll second that.
And also Friday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Right. The move by Alderman from the tenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-third, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. I hereby return to you Committee Substitute for Board Bill Two entitled, "The United States Government Recently Has Enacted Legislation Appropriating Additional Funding For City Activities and Expenses Related to COVID-nineteen Pandemic in This Ordinance." "The Board of Aldermen Authorizes the Mayor or His or Her Designee To Apply For and Accept Funds Received From American Rescue Plan Act 2021. Directs the Comptroller to Establish a New Account for the Received Funds, Appropriate Funds, Contain the Severability Clause, and Contain an Emergency Clause." "Appropriation of this funding will greatly benefit the public by providing additional resources for addressing housing instability and public health and welfare." Article Four, Section Seventeen of the Charter of the City of St. Louis states, "If a bill contains several items of appropriation, the mayor may disapprove one or more items while approving the others, and the items approved shall become an ordinance in like manner as the bill approved, and the items disapproved shall be proceeded within a like manner as the bill disapproved." Subject to Article Four, Section Seventeen of the Charter of the City of St. Louis, I hereby issue a line item veto for the following expenditures. Section Six pursuant to detail on Exhibit A of Board Bill Two, Committee Sub as amended. I hereby veto twenty million dollars for Dr. Martin Luther King Drive Economic Empowerment Fund, three million dollars for North Grand Economic Empowerment Fund, five million dollars for West Florissant Economic Empowerment Fund, and five million dollars for Natural Bridge Economic Empowerment Fund. On August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I hereby approve said Committee Substitute for Board Bill Two, except for those items specifically vetoed and not approved. Respectfully submitted to Shawara O. Jones, there. That is extent of report of city officials.
We will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal accountants? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal accountants? We will dispense with line items eight. Number ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Eighty-Six sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Esmen and Apportement, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller on behalf of the City of St. Louis and owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport to accept and execute on behalf of the City a certain airport aid agreement offered by Missouri Highway Transportation Commission for the marketing and promotion of air service at the airport for a maximum obligation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Board Bill Eighty-Seven sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmen and Apportement, authorizing fire chief on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute an assistance to firefighters grant with the United States Department of Homeland Security appropriating said funds and to require city match for said funds and authorizing fire chiefs to expend the appropriate funds by entering into contracts otherwise for grant purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Eighty-eight sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name William Lacy Clay Boulevard pursuant to ordinance six eight nine three seven, which shall begin at the intersection of Natural Bridge Avenue and Fair Avenue and run west on Natural Bridge Avenue to the intersection of Natural Bridge Avenue and North Florissant Avenue. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill Eighty-Six, to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill Eighty-Seven, and to the Streets Committee, Board Bill Eighty-eight. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
We have none.
Expence with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill Thirty-nine, I'm sorry, perfection consent, we have none.
Perfect. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Thirty-nine as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, an ordinance adopting the Uniform Plumbing Code, twenty fifteen edition, in full except it conflicts with the changes thereto contained herein as the plumbing code of the City of St. Louis, repealing ordinance six nine two five five and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause, and a codification clause.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill Thirty-nine as amended. So I would, I would say that we should just go ahead and get this through. We need to move it along. It's been a couple of years. Twenty-third, I'd like to move to perfect. Oh, yeah, I'd like to, I'm sorry. I would like to move to perfect. Board Bill number thirty-nine as amended. Move by Alderman from the twenty-third and take a second on that motion.
Again.
On the ninth, Alderman from twenty-third, please proceed. So I'm sorry. So as I was saying, it's just something needs to be moved along. There, you know, there was, I guess, over the last couple of years, we had discussion on which way to move, but this is what came out of committee. Uh, so I would ask that we perfect this. If anyone has any questions, I certainly will do my best to answer. Okay, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if Alderman from the twenty-third would yield.
Alderman from the twenty-third, yield. Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Alderman, um, you had a separate board bill at one point, right? Can you tell me what the difference is between, and I'm sorry, because I'm having video and audio problems. I'm on my iPad because I couldn't get on my desktop. Can you tell me what the difference is between the bill that you sponsored and the bill that is currently before us?
One of them was the Uniform Plumbing Code, and the other one was the overall plumbing code, which actually is adopted in a lot of different places. But since that bill didn't come out of committee, the right thing to do is to move this along.
And my question is, which one was the plumbers, which one were the plumbers and pipe fitters supporting?
This, this was the bill the plumbers and pipe fitters support.
And so why I have question, because as I understood it from some minority contractors, that, that was the one that they had a lot of problems with, they had concerns about. The plumbers and pipe fitters have had a long history of exclusion of minority contractors. And so, um, and it also, so I'm wondering why that would come out of committee versus the other one. Um, I thought your bill was a better bill.
Well, obviously I did too, because that was my bill. But, but to be honest with you, this is, we have to move this, it's been at least two years. They're still operating on the two thousand, and I believe it's five plumbing code. Uh, most people are actually, actually on the two thousand and twenty code. Uh, and at this point, you know, we can do something again next, next year, but to hold this back and just keep saying, well, we're just going to keep fighting for something different, didn't make any, any good sense. This is what came out of committee, uh, in a close vote. But we have to, we have to allow them to move forward. We got to get the newer code to kind of start matching up with the rest of the codes in the city.
Well, I don't, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, and I, I will take the blame, but it's been two years that I was fighting for mine and, uh, this was just not, you know, being, it was being held up. It's something that technically probably should have been passed one way or the other two years ago. But moving forward, we, we really need to pass this one because it's what came out of committee. And if we don't pass it, they're still going to be operating the way they are now. They're just going to be operating on a very old code that needs to be updated. And, and I'm, I agree with you. You know, next year is another year and we could try to fight next year to, to make changes going into the future. But this, this is what's in front of us and I believe it's what we, we shouldn't, we should move on and let the code move forward. And I apologize.
I thank you. No, I thank you for that opinion. I've been, I deal with this a little longer. Um, I, as you know, I used to be the Chair of Public Safety before I left here in my capacity of the twentieth ward, and I had conversations with the pipe fitters then. Their lobbyists at that time was Casey Stark Triplett's father. Um, and they tried to get me to do a lot of things that I wouldn't do because I know the history of exclusion that goes with the pipe fitters. And so I don't believe that we pass things wrong that will be detrimental to African-American contractors. So, um, we, they have to come to the table and they have to update themselves and make sure that they're in the year twenty twenty-one. When they, a lot of times black contractors have problems because we pass these laws that allow people to exclude them. And it doesn't say exclusively exclude them. It just, they have to go through certain people and then they can't be included. One of the things that John Triplett tried to do, and he's passed on, and I'm not talking out of turn, he tried to get me to get rid of the air conditioner. They had an exception where if it was fourteen tons or below in, in air conditioning, then they did not require certain things. So he took me over to St. Louis University and he showed me how that there were people from other countries working on the contracts. And he said, we have to get rid of this. But, um, because I have been doing rehab for a long time, I start calling all the minority contractors, and I know a lot of the minority contractors that do heating and cooling. And they say, well, if you do this, this will destroy us. This will put us out of business. This will make it so we can't do it. So anything fourteen tons and below for air conditioning, this allows us to get in the game. So a lot of times, we don't understand what we're doing when we put these things together and we hurt minority contractors. And this is one of the things, the pipe fitters to me ought to be ashamed of themselves because they are hurting minority contractors, and I am not going to support it. I do not support, oh, we just go ahead and push it forward because they want to be able to control and we don't understand how they're doing it until somebody comes and says, well, this is why we cannot now participate in certain things. So for me, um, and, and I want to say, I want to give a full, um, uh, disclosure is that I have a few family members that got in the pipe fitters because they were connected to Leroy Tyus. And so the connection got them, so I want to tell this, okay? But the more I heard what they told me, the more outraged I am. I'm friends with Mr. Cersei and his dad. But the bigger picture is bigger than one or two small things. And for me, they, I want to put this on the record, is that they ought to be ashamed of themselves. They should stop trying to keep small minority contractors out. And if you're doing it and you don't know it, then you should be sitting down with them. But it is my responsibility as African-American member of this Board of Aldermen to speak to it, which has been going on for twenty-something years, well, longer than that, but that's how long I've been dealing with it. And so I cannot support this board bill because I don't think it's in its best form. And we couch too many things behind words, and then we don't know the outcome. And it's a outcome that we didn't know about or we weren't looking for. And so I'm not going to vote for something that's an adverse reaction against minority contractors if I know anything about it. So I will be a no vote and I'd ask for a roll call. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't disagree with anything you said, but doing nothing doesn't fix what you're trying to fix. It just keeps it the way it is now, just with an older code. I'm one that was fighting to make the changes, and, and again, we may want to address this again next session. You know, how we move forward, but, but if we say, gee, well, you know, it, it isn't going to change the structure of how the plumbers and pipe fitters are doing what they're doing. It's just going to keep them at an older code. This will just allow them to still operate under the same structure, just under a newer code that needs to be updated. How we address this again next year, certainly, I'm far looking at how we, how we address this. We could, you know, because the codes are going to have to go, this only brings to the two thousand and fifteen. The next thing we need to work on is how we get the codes up to the two thousand and twenty, and that's what my bill would have did, but that's not what we're discussing now. The, the, the thing about this is we can't just keep holding them back to the two thousand or code, whatever it was they're working on, the older code. If we don't vote this through, all it does is, their structure still stays the same, but they'll just be operating in an older code. So, you know, in other words, it doesn't fix what you're trying to fix. Even if we vote against this, it doesn't fix what we're trying to fix. it doesn't fix what we're trying to fix. It, it just keeps them in an older code. And I'm going to work with you again next year to try to make that change.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Um, I would, uh,
I'm sorry.
I would disagree with the Alderman from the twenty-third. When we start to pass legislation that makes it part of our law and we know better, then we are updating it and saying that we approve of it. So if I know better, I need to do better. Um, if we keep sending a message to them, then we're not going to make this law. We're not going to incorporate this. We're not going to say that's okay. We know what you're doing and we're going to shine a light on it. Then they will then have to do better. If we just pass this through and say, oh, well, we know that they're doing these things that hurt minority contractors, then we are no better than they are. So if I know better, my no, my no vote is going to be loud. So I disagree, Alderman. I appreciate it. Uh, I've been watching this kind of quietly from afar. Uh, I didn't get it up in the mix of it, but I've been dealing with it for a long time. I am a pro-union person, but when unions are wrong, I am the person that will say that to their face. When I, when Mr. Triplett was trying to lobby me, then, um, when I then got together with all the minority contractors and they start telling me what was wrong, he's just saying, okay, Sharon, okay, Sharon. Because he knew that I caught him. So, um, I don't care who it is. If I catch you and I think you're doing something wrong to the greater good, the whole point that we have these minority contractors involved and we pass these laws to get them, um, included is so that they can then become the majority contractors where they can hire different people. And if you always keep your foot on their neck and you go, oh, my God, foot's on the neck, let me look away. Um, then we get an outcome, uh, much as what we got with a policeman putting his foot on a black man's neck. So I cannot be a part of it. If I don't know and I think it's right, I can vote for it. But if I know better and have seen it personally, I cannot support this and I do not support this. And, um, uh, I'm, I'm asking other people to really look at this. This is not the best way to do it. Just say, oh, we're passing something along. Let them operate from the old ordinance, but let them know we're never going to update whatever else they want in that ordinance until they make sure that minority contractors are taken care of. And again, Mr. President, I've asked for a roll call vote, please.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak on the bill.
Yes, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you. Um, first, thank you for the, uh, Alderman the twenty-third carrying this, uh, bill for me today. I'm driving back from seeing my parents and some family I haven't seen in a long time, thanks to COVID. Um, but, um, I think there's a little confusion because this, uh, this doesn't have anything to do with minority participation numbers. Um, this is just updating, as the Alderman from the twenty-third said, updating the current code we have now. Um, it comes down to, uh, the code book that contractors use and the, um, curriculum essentially, um, that is taught. We did have, um, a minority, a city minority contractor, um, testify, a longtime city minority contractor, um, testify in favor of this, who is also on the, um, Plumbing Review Commission. So I, this is not a minority participation number. Um, this doesn't have caveats for who can do, um, what or, um, the, uh, amount, you know, if amount, if X amount of money is spent on a, um, project, then it has to go to this type of contractor, this and that. This is really just updating, um, the code that we've used for decades. And, um, this is also what the city, um, Plumbing Review Board recommends. I mean, they do have minority, um, city resident contractors, um, on that, uh, on that board. Um, so I, this is not, um, I know there's some confusion on, um, Alderman Norrigan's bill, um, with, uh, the, um, asbestos bill, but I don't know if that's getting confused. But this, I, I never, um, I've never met, um, uh, Mr., I never had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Triplett. Um, so I, I, he, I don't know, he didn't work on this bill, so I don't know how things were done in the past. But, um, this is a bill that has absolutely nothing to do with whether you're union or not union. And, um, I just want to make that very clear. This is just like we have the electrical code or other types of code. Um, and we're just updating the standards and curriculum. Thank you.
And, and I think that's what I was trying to.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're not recognized yet. You, raise your hand and I'll get back to you. I'll make sure to get back. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, first, I'm going to ditto everything that Alderwoman Tyus said, but I want to get back to the basics. As we heard in the committee meeting and, uh, in the process of voting for this, the City of St. Louis Building Division did not support this. These are the people who know what is best for our city, chooses all those codes and, and update things for us, take care of our day-to-day operations, and I support them. That is why I voted no. I also voted no because at the end of the day, a lot of what happens sometimes is, do I owe you? And I don't owe anybody a vote for any reason. I don't care if they donate to your campaign or not. You don't owe anybody a vote that is against operations. The operations of the City of St. Louis, the bureaucratic division that is controlling it, takes care of it day-to-day. This was not their recommendation. And so to go against that makes no common sense. All the other codes are based on a different method, and this will be the only one that will not be in accordance. So as we move forward, we need to really get a grip on using and relying and supporting and helping those who do our day-to-day work because they have our best interests. No other entity outside of us has our best interests. And, uh, if you want to talk about, no, this doesn't have anything to do with minority participation. Oh, yes, it does. And I feel for the young, that he's not that young, because I know how old he is, but the one representative that did come and speak, you know, now maybe he'll get lucky and get a few jobs that he probably never would have got. But at the end of the day, it was the wrong way to go on this. We should have supported the Building Division and their recommendations. I thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, just to, um, reiterate, Mr. Triplett has gone on to glory, so we can't deal with him anymore. I wanted to make sure you knew that. Uh, but he was a personal friend of mine and then one of my cousins is a pipe fitter. Uh, the Tyus name gets you someplace in that, uh, little organization. That still doesn't make it right, okay? Yes, there will always be a black person that they go get to put the face up there and say, well, look at here, this is not racist. And this doesn't have anything to do with it because it's buried and you don't know the impact. And I'd say after all this time, it's not an unintended impact. It is a fully intended impact because that's how you keep things the same. You go, oh, this is just all right. Look, we're just passing this and it doesn't make any difference. But buried down deep in these wordings is something that is not a good impact. And then they go, oh, I, we didn't mean it that way. It's just that we got all the power to choose. So, uh, this is a pipe fitters plumbers driven bill. As the Alderwoman from the nineteenth said, it is not the bill that the people who, uh, do our codes and, and run our building division are for. It is a pipe fitters thing, um, what's the other name? The pipe fitters bill. And so we got to stop just pushing stuff forward for unions without making them responsible to everybody. So, uh, sitting there saying, oh, you don't know, it doesn't have anything to do with it. It actually does have something to do with it. And having one black person come and testify, I get so tired of that. With my racial gerrymandering, there were five black people that voted for him. And all of them have now said how terrible that was and that was wrong. So just because black people vote for it, that don't make it right. And of course, they're always going to give some, get somebody who will say, oh, this is good because I got the contract or I'm going to get a contract. The whole thing about inclusion is not a I, it is a we. The racism that, uh, permeated our communities in our, our United States was for everybody. It was not just against poor black people, middle class. It was against everybody. It is like when you do a class action suit because something was a bad item and that you don't say, well, rich people, you can't be part of this. So, uh, that one little guy who said, oh, it's fine, that doesn't make it fine at all. It is not. This has been long, uh, long-term ongoing. Um, and the pipe fitters have been one of the, has a history, history of leaving black people out and going to choose certain black people and putting their face up there. And the Tyus name has been one of them. Um, putting their face up there and then saying, see, we are, we are okay. But when I got here, um, to the board in the nineties and I started learning about how things were, it is not fair and I don't care who my friend is or who's their face. I don't care if you're higher one or two people. I'm looking for the long-term, how it affects everybody. And it does have racial implications. And I also do not support when our own building division is saying this is not the best thing to do. Um, but because we have a certain union pushing it, that that's what we're going along with. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any further discussion, any further discussion, further discussion? Alderman from twenty-third, you had some comments. I don't know if anybody.
No. If no one has any, any questions, um, and.
I, there, there, uh, we do have some other Alderman.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to just listen. I'm sorry. I'll wait to close.
Uh, Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. The only concern that I had was, and I did speak to the Building Division and I do understand that the Building Division runs our city in regards to building and there's no mark on the Building Division. But I just have a problem when there's no communication. So I don't know who talked to who, but I do know plumbers, they did reach out. Building never reached out. I never got a clear understanding to after the fact. And so I understand with the Alderwoman from the first and the Alderwoman with the nineteenth for saying about people go in and do their own agenda. And so normally what happens to my understanding is people that want things to pass, they communicate with the people that's on there. I never got any communication from the Build Division, only when we had the hearing. And that's when we went with the back and forth and then it got more confusion at the end. So it's not about who supports you or who supports me because that's not what it's about to me. It's about trying to educate me to help me understand what is going to impact and how we're going to be able to move the city forward. And so I just felt that the Build Division didn't give me anything to go with. They didn't say anything. When I tell you I didn't hear anything, I didn't hear anything until the day of that hearing. And then it was a back and forth thing. What Alderwoman Tyus is saying, this is the first time I heard that part of the conversation. So I just think it's not fair to us as Alder people. And I still look at myself as a new Alder person. Maybe I don't look new, but I, I still look as a newbie. And so I rely on my senior Alder people to kind of direct me and help me. But it's kind of hard when you got a case and as Alderwoman Tyus knows and Coder and Brett knows as attorneys, you have to hear both sides of the case. And so when you get one side of information, that's when you start leaning with the information that you're getting. So now I'm hearing other information and I just think it's unfair. People should be able to plead the case so people can get the facts to be able to make the most logical decision. And so that's, that's what I'm just had to say. It's no big deal, but that's just my thoughts.
Okay. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just, um, I keep, I keep going in my head about who came to represent. And, you know, we have a Black Contractors Association in the City of St. Louis. It would have been nice to have had them represented to give their opinion of the bill. Uh, it would have been nice to have a little bit more conversation from the Building Division. Most of that back and forth was putting them down, uh, accusing them of not having meetings and a number of other things, which I am not, uh, that doesn't give me conclusion for understanding. And now after listening to Alderwoman Boyd, uh, I would like to ask, um, the sponsor of the bill, if he would not mind putting it on the informal calendar. And let's have a real committee meeting and let's get everybody at the table. And also, um, have a little bit more facts because everything that I heard from the Build Division, and I know I hear things a little bit different because I have a background uh, in construction as well and know about the pitfalls that have been going back and forth, uh, and stay in touch with it. And that's not everybody's, uh, people who are not, uh, what do you call it? Uh, people who are not, uh, out, uh, doing that as a, as a job, which is sponsoring these people and speaking on their behalf, uh, in a paid position, uh, would not have the same language and or insight because you would not have been given that. Uh, as we know on that board bill that was mentioned just a few minutes ago, as we were being told one thing in committee meeting, talking about the bill, there was something directly opposing it going on in Washington DC to block not just minorities, but any small business person from benefiting. So you have to be careful of what you're doing and you have to have a clear understanding. So I'm just making a plea. Let's, let's try to get this right. Uh, and I said this to the, uh, pipe fitters and you heard me saying that, uh, they could do better, they should do better. I've been begging them to do better and if, and I'm going to always listen to the people who do my work every day. And they've done a good job. So, um, thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the eleventh.
Hi, uh, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, as a bill sponsor, I would like to go forward with a vote. We had a real committee meeting. Any association, um, could monitor, uh, legislation here at the Board of Aldermen. If your industry is affected by legislation passed at a local level, it is your association's job and that, uh, board's job to, um, pay attention to what's going on. And anyone was invited to, uh, the committee hearing. Um, the Alderman from the twenty-third did a great job of being very thorough. And, um, I, uh, feel that, uh, people had their, um, time to come speak. Um, if I see legislation and I'm, um, friends with someone from an association or I'm concerned, I certainly notify folks and let them know that, um, they can, uh, come, uh, speak. Um, obviously the Building Division works with contractors all the time. And if they, uh, had someone that they thought, um, should come speak, um, I, they certainly had the opportunity. Um, I feel like there are a lot of generalities, um, being made here and not specific to the bill. And, um, you know, I, we hear a lot of times when a lot of us ask questions on the floor of the Board of Aldermen, you know, we, that should have come up in committee, that should have come up in committee. Um, and I certainly do think there was a lot of, uh, a time and preparation, um, for, uh, the hearing, or hearings plural. And I think that, um, I would like to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the, Alderman from the twenty-third?
So I, I agree. This has been on the plate of the Public Safety Committee for two years. It's, it's about the code. It's about moving the code forward. I don't know by putting it on the informal calendar that it would make any changes to it. Um, because then it would go back to committee. We'd be in a new session again. I think that next session, as we come up to the new session, we should, I, I understand that Alderwoman Tyus disagrees. Um, I'm, I'm just giving my opinion. And certainly everybody's going to vote how they feel. Um, you know, this is only bringing the code up to two thousand and fifteen. We still want to try and get the code beyond that. This was two years that been, been going around. going around. Um, the as amended came from the, uh, Laborers Union, who said, gee, you know, we, we put certain things in here so that we would have more minority inclusion in the pro, in the projects. And so what it did was, the as amended, uh, allowed the laborers to at least have more, uh, input on, on jobs, more workers on the job site. Uh, but I, I'm just gonna close with that and ask for a favorable vote. And then next session, we'll go back to public safety and maybe do it again. I mean, but I, I think holding the code back for another year isn't, isn't the right thing to do either. I think let's move the code forward to fifteen. It's not, you know, it's not what I had intended to want to do, but let's move it forward to fifteen. And then next year, we can reintroduce the bill I did and see if we can't try to move things forward again. Putting it on the informal calendar basically would kill it for this year. Uh, you know, so I'm just gonna close with that. I, I think this is simply gonna be moving the code forward, doing nothing, keeps everything in place that's in place now that, that, that some people are arguing against. It just holds it to an older code. So I would just ask that we move it forward, and we'll readdress it again next year, but at least get the plumbing code brought to two thousand and fifteen. The rest of the world will be working on two thousand and twenty, but let, you know, I would ask for favorable consideration. Let's just move this thing on, and we'll deal with it again next session. So I'll close with that.
Okay. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, taken by Alderman from the twenty-first, that we, that we perfect board bill thirty-nine as amended. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Pass.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans? Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Good morning.
Alderwoman Peal?
Aye.
Alderman Ty?
No.
Alderwoman Davis?
No.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Pass.
Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaquero?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
No.
Alderwoman Boyd?
No.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
No.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
No.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans?
No.
Alderman Collins Mohammed?
Present.
Alderman Boyd? Alderman Con?
Aye.
Eighteen, I votes, eight, no votes, and one voted present.
I vote, just staying motion, Alderman from the twenty-third, perfected board bill thirty-nine as amended.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Right. Third reading consent.
We have none.
Third reading of the port of the rollsuits.
We have none.
First reading of resolutions.
Resolution seventy-nine sponsored by Alderman Vaquero, Crime Prevention Program Funds, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on first reading, resolution seventy-nine.
So what I want to do, uh, is to refer that to committee. This is about the million dollars that we appropriate every year. Uh, and it needs to start with the resolution. Two years ago, I didn't realize that we didn't do it, so the money was not able to be appropriated. This time I'm gonna make sure and get it in on, so, uh, it, it, I, I don't think anything other than it needs to be referred to committee, so the committee can get a subcommittee put together to start looking into how we're gonna spend, um, the, uh, the Prop S money.
All right. I would like to make the motion to, uh,
Yes.
Public safety.
Like to make a motion that we refer this to commit, uh, to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, and I think that was the Alderman from the twenty-seventh, the second.
That was, yeah.
Yeah. Talking about Alderman from the twenty-seventh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution seventy-nine of public.
So noted. Resolution eighty-one sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Colder and Alderman Gunther, Health Commissioners Order Number Two for COVID-nineteen.
Alderman, Alderman from the, you recognize on first reading, resolution eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I request unanimous consent on resolution eighty-one.
Second.
Second.
No objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you. All right. I guess this is the main event, the reason we're having this special meeting today. Uh, I'll be briefing my comments. My, my sincere hope is there's really not much disagreement over this, um, as we've seen in some other neighboring jurisdictions. Um, what resolution eighty-one seeks to do is simply, um, I, I guess, make, uh, Dr. Echols' most recent health orders regarding masks, uh, requiring masks in indoor public spaces and on public transit official, uh, to be in line with, uh, a bill passed by the Missouri Legislature. It was House Bill two-seventy-one. It's referenced in, uh, in the text of the resolution, which basically requires, you know, local governmental bodies such as ourselves to approve these, uh, these health orders by, by county health officials. Uh, so that's what we're seeking to do here today. The health order itself is attached to the resolution and is fairly straightforward. Uh, it's Health Commissioners Order Number Two, uh, and it would require vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals five, age of five or older to wear face coverings while indoors, uh, in public spaces and on public transit in the city of St. Louis. There are certain exceptions to it, uh, listed there as well. Um, but, you know, this is in response, obviously, to the growing Delta variant, uh, and the, and the issues we've been seeing with that. Um, the other thing the resolution does is asks, uh, the, the Health Department to give us a written report by September eleventh, uh, outlining vaccination efforts, um, and, and back to the vaccine incentive programs and a number of other things. You know, we've got to attack this in two ways. I think we all agree, both vaccinations and, and continuing to mask, uh, because we're seeing this variant is, is highly transmissible and even vaccinated individuals can spread it. So I would ask for your support, uh, of this resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions. By no means am I a health expert.
All right. We, we do have, now, so Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add me as a co-sponsor to the resolution.
All right. Thanks. Ma, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. And also,
Thank you.
And, uh, the Alderman from the twelfth. Uh, Alderwoman from the first?
Also, uh,
That was gonna be my request, also add me as a co-sponsor, please, Mr. Clerk.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Alderwoman from the first, would you like to make a motion and do it in bank? Because it looks like we have a bunch of answers coming up.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we, uh, pass resolution eighty-one in bank.
Then move, then move by Alderman from the first, second, and by Alderman from the twelfth. Got you that time. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. And as, as with these things, um, if you have an audio problems and you did not want to be part of them, bank motion, feel free to, to contract the clerk, um, you know, uh, before the meeting is over or anytime today to, to notify. Uh, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from this, uh, Alderman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, I just wanted to do kind of a little, uh, uh, clarification. Um, even if that board bill had went on the informal calendar, we're at the beginning of our calendar year, not the end. So we're not going into a new calendar year. We just started in April. But Alderman from the twenty-third said it would put it into a new calendar year. So I think there's a little confusion. We go from, uh, we go from April to April the, the third Tuesday in April. So we're not in any danger of all, at all, if we put something on the informal calendar of pushing it to the next year.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any further discussion on this, uh, on resolution? I really don't want to open up discussion on that last one. If you guys have anything further on that, um, uh, we trying to get, we, as Alderman from the seventh said, we're at the main event now. So, any, any further discussion on resolution eighty-one, any further discussion on resolution eighty-one? All right. Alderman from the seventh, you recognize to close, make the motion for adoption of resolution eighty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, and I do really appreciate my colleagues jumping on and, and co-sponsoring this and, and the work of the mayor's office and Dr. Echols and smoothly getting this over to us, uh, and making sure that, you know, we're in compliance with state law. Um, I think, you know, we probably would all prefer if, if the doctor and, and the mayor's office could make these orders in a more nimble fashion. But this is what we're left with, this is what state law requires. Uh, and I'm glad we're doing this, and I think it sends a strong message that we're doing this unanimously. Uh, and with that, I will, uh, move to adopt resolution eighty-one.
Move by Alderman from the seventh?
Second.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the nineteenth and, uh, Alderwoman there from the twenty-sixth, I think.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
She, y'all got more energy than I do.
The audio doesn't sound the same coming over my phone. It's a tenny, as, tenny sound, but, uh, it's been moved, uh, and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. To that, we have adopted resolution eighty-one.
That's the extent of first reading resolutions.
Second read.
We have none.
Miss Lance, let's finish business.
We have none.
Announcement.
We have none.
Any further announcement? Alderman from the twenty-third?
I do, I do want to make an announcement. Uh, on the fourteenth, we're gonna have a public safety meeting and see, uh, was actually the closest date I can get where we'd have staff. Uh, I would like to have addressed it sooner. It will be solely or mostly to address the, uh, the jail, uh, both, both facilities. Uh, I've invited, uh, Rich Bradley and, uh, Mr. Carson to speak, uh, to talk about, um, with Rich Bradley in particular, uh, the timing, how long it's gonna take. Uh, you know, everything that we've been told, I've been told, even going over there, it's at least two years in, it, to get things put together. So I think, uh, we're, we're gonna be discussing that. Uh, and, and if someone does want their bill heard, we'll, we'll do it on the fourteenth. But mainly the, the main event or the main thing there will be to try and get what's going on with the jail. What can we do to help move things along, but at the same time, be open and honest about how long it's gonna take, what it's gonna take to fix it. You know, how do we, how do we move that forward versus, uh, three months, a year, two, you know, the cost, we'll try to get all the, you know, I've asked to get them to come over with all the real facts. So that'll be on the fourteenth. Um, and anybody that, that's wanting to come in, you know, beside the board, uh, members certainly just want to maybe aware of that.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. And thanks for moving forward, Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President and the board. Uh, I want everyone to know that I will be submitting a letter to the new, um, director of the St. Louis Art Museum, welcoming her not only to the art museum but to the city. And I would like to invite anyone interested to sign on to that. She is our first female director. She's our first Asian-American director and our first, uh, person of color director for the St. Louis Art Museum, which I contend is the best museum in the state. I mean, Nelson Atkins is great. St. Louis Art Museum's the best. Uh, so please, and to do that in your inbox later today, um, or early tomorrow, and just let me know if you would like, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Ald, Alderwoman from the second?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to say happy anniversary to my parents. They have been married now for forty-seven years. Um, this past weekend, that's a very long time to be with one person. Uh, so happy anniversary to them. And I also want to say happy anniversary to my dad. He is celebrating, I believe, his forty-five years here now in St. Louis. He moved here from, uh, Brownsville, Tennessee. He had the choice that weekend to go to college. Uh, my uncle called my grandparents and said he had an interview set up for General Motors, so he had to make the choice to come to St. Louis or go off to college. And he chose to come here. So it's been a great ride for him. Of course, he has an awesome daughter. So, um, congratulations, dad. Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations. Wow.
And he does have an awesome daughter. Any further announcements, any further announcement? All right.
Oh, Mr. President. Do you mind? I just, okay. I just wanted to say, um, congratulations to Dale Russett on his retirement. Dale is probably, uh, the almanac, history encyclopedia, any reference book that you could think of. He is that on behalf of the city of St. Louis and development in this city. I, I thank him for training me up years ago when I first got appointed to my first committee, when they started SLDC and a number of other things. But I, I just want to say thank you, thank you to Dale. He is one of those people who works quietly and never grumbles, except probably under his breath. But I, uh, wish him well in his future endeavors. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, let's give Dale Russett a big round of applause. Certainly gonna miss him here, uh, in the city. Uh, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to excuse the Alder from the third and the twenty-second for necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the fourteenth and Alderman from the first, I think. Fourteenth and first. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 No?
No.
My, my squeak's run out again. By your voice, you have adopted the motion of the Alderman from the tenth. Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one at ten oh one AM.
Second.
Move.
Ten oh one.
The staff request, the staff requested as much time off as they could have off, so I gave them one minute.
Oh, okay.
Let's do that one minute. Second on that motion.
Second.
Second.
It was Alderman from the fifth, and one more time, and the, and the fourteenth. And move the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, extend the adjourn. Thanks, y'all, and I appreciate all you all taking off and getting back here to get this done. Appreciate you. Have a good day.
Thank you.